Okay.
Good afternoon and welcome to the September 2nd, 2025 Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting. The hour is 6:15. I'm calling the meeting to order at this time. Our first business this evening is hopefully to go into non-public till approximately 10:07, and then we have a board interview, and we'll be returning to the Novak Room at approximately 7 o'clock to commence our regular business meeting. So with that, I would entertain a motion to enter into non-public under RSA 91A 32D.
So moved.
Second.
So motion by Selectwoman Belandra, seconded by Selectwoman Cowan. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please.
Selectwoman Chauvin.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
Selectwoman Gilman.
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. The board will be going into non-public. Thank you.
For this week's report, tips to slow the spread of mosquitoes. The fire department becomes RSI certified. A mid-year financial report from the Select Board. Connor's Climb 5K returns in just a few weeks. The community honors crossing guard Russell Hoyt. The Beer and Chili Fest is just around the corner. A history of Parapoint Park. Exeter Police and Fire grant a Make-A-Wish. For Exeter TV, I'm Dan Monchek, and this is the Exeter Biweekly Report. Let's get started. Good afternoon, Exeter. Thanks for tuning in to the longest biweekly report in history.
Woo! Yes, yes!
Bob went away on vacation, so between Gabe and I, we've got nine segments to get through. If you like supporting us and the work we do, please consider hitting the subscribe button and liking this video to help spread the word about the show and all things Exeter. For our first segment, mosquitoes are once again on the rise, so with the help of Health Officer Madison Bailey, we put together a call to action to help prevent the spread of dangerous diseases.
Despite their reputation as an everyday nuisance, mosquitoes often pose a much greater danger than most people realize. They can perpetuate and spread diseases that pose major threats to humans and other animals alike. Diseases such as triple E, Eastern Equine Encephalitis, which our area of New Hampshire faced off against last year. Despite rising cases in surrounding towns, triple E never managed to strike in Exeter, and a large part of that was thanks to the efforts of the town's health officer, Madison Bailey, getting a jump on preventative measures early. A major contributor being the use of Larvicide and Adulto side spraying with the assistance of Northeast Vegetation and Mosquito Control. With fall just around the corner, the mosquito population once again poses a health risk to Exeter's population. To help stem the tide, there are several preventative measures everyone in town should take to help stop the spread of the disease. The first rule everyone knows is to wear insect repellent, specifically ones that contain DEET, Picardin, or something with lemon eucalyptus on it. On top of that, you should always wear protective clothing that covers your skin and limit outdoor activities to times mosquitoes are not out and about. They're most active from dusk to dawn. While it's easy to work on stopping mosquitoes from attacking you, it's another thing to stop them from breeding around your homes. Mosquitoes lay their eggs in standing water. It does not matter the source of this water, as long as it's still enough for the eggs to hatch. This can be in something as little as a bottle cap, or as big as a tarp laying in a backyard. Children's toys, buckets, bottles, saucers, bird bats, and even gutters are prime locations for mosquitoes to lay their eggs, and when it rains, it gives them ample room to make more babies. That's why if you see standing water, you should dump it immediately. If it cannot be dumped, it should be covered or stored as soon as possible. The less places mosquitoes can spawn, the less they'll be around to harass you. For home and business owners, this also includes drains and gutters. If clogged, can have plenty of space for them to lay their eggs, and you should stay attentive if you want to contribute to helping this issue. While the town does what it can to stop the spread of mosquitoes, it takes everybody to stay alert and attentive, as with one step taken to stop them is as big of a step as any other. Protect yourself, protect your family, and protect your community.
With the loss of ASL services in Exeter and the surrounding areas, the Exeter Fire Department got to work getting their paramedics RSI certified. Here's what that means for the station.
As changes come and go throughout the community, the Exeter Fire Department must be ready to adapt and react accordingly. When the department no longer had access to call in other stations to assist in rapid sequence intubation, or RSI, earlier this year, they moved quickly to train and certify their paramedics on the protocol themselves in order to continue saving lives on the fly.
RSI stands for Rapid Sequence Intubation, and it's the process where we sedate and then intubate, so we put a breathing tube in for somebody, and that's for people that are critically injured or have severe respiratory problems or compromised airway. So we're trying to make sure that they can get oxygen and air into their body without compromising that.
We take a patient to the emergency room, and within five or 10 minutes, the patient's then intubated because they had the ability to do so. A lot of illnesses and traumas, your body does everything it can to compensate. So your body's really good at compensating. It'll shut down other areas and pick up other ones to try and make it so you survive as long as you can. However, that can only do that for so long, and eventually, patients will either go into respiratory distress or full-on cardiac arrest. And if we can stop them in the track before that happens and then take over the airway, we can ensure that they're being oxygenated and ventilated appropriately.
We recognized a gap in our service that we used, and it was largely what we used them for, and with that going away, we realized we needed to start our own process. We reached out to the state, got all the information we needed to get certified. We used an outside agency to do the training. He came in and did training for the entire department. The first training was for the entire department, so everybody that's a certified provider, EMS provider for the department, went through the first part.
We've had to do two full classroom days with Eric Jaeger. He's an instructor who came in, and a lot of it was lecture. And then we did probably six hours of just RSI scenarios, running through different intubation techniques, all the medications. And then since then, every paramedic who becomes licensed has to have five live intubation. Two or three weeks ago, we got the approval from the state that we were officially certified, and because of only having five paramedics who are currently licensed, one shift has two paramedics on that are, and that shift had a call where they ended up needing to intubate a person who traditionally we would not have been able to. So they were able to sedate and paralyze them, do the RSI, and then transport the patient to Portsmouth Regional. But now, we're going to be able to sedate and paralyze the patients, and then intubate them, and continue breathing for them. That way, their body doesn't have the ability to crash before we do so. The typical call where we need to RSI someone maybe happens in Exeter a handful of times a year. They're usually pretty significant calls, and we did have the ability before to call Exeter ALS, and that's where they were kind of a lifeline for us, being so close in town, if they were available and having that capability. When it is necessary, you absolutely need it, and it's a life-saving intervention. And I've heard of calls, not necessarily in Exeter, but other towns, where they didn't have the capability and there wasn't anyone around with the capability, and that patient ended up going into cardiac arrest. So if you can stop the dying before that point, then you might be able to at least get them to definitive care where they can try and fix the problem.
It gives us the ability to provide that service to the community instead of having to call another agency in or wait for an agency to come in to provide that service. So it's quicker service and treatment sooner.
We're entering into budget season as summer comes to a close, and that means catching up on our mid-year financial report from our Meeting Minute series. This is your Meeting Minute for the August 18th Select Board Meeting. The meeting began by announcing the voluntary resignation of Russ Dean from his position as town manager. The Select Board appointed the Assistant Town Manager, Melissa Roy, as the interim town manager effective immediately. Then the town's Water and Sewer Superintendent, Steve Dalton, came in front of the board to discuss a water restriction due to drought conditions in Exeter.
Right now, you know, the water supply is obviously diminishing with no rain really in sight for the next 10 days.
The board decided to raise the water restriction to level two, as Mr. Dalton explained.
It changes landscape watering by odd number addresses is allowed on odd-numbered days. Landscaping watering by even number addresses is allowed on even-numbered days, and still the same restriction with the hours of no watering between 8:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m.
The board went on to hear a mid-year financial report from Exeter's Financial Director, Corey Stevens.
Thank you all for indulging me, allowing me to come in this evening and speak to you about our town results as of June 30th for the general fund, water fund, and sewer fund.
Mr. Stevens discussed some of the financial highlights from the past six months. This includes the implementation of three collective bargaining contracts for police, fire, and DPW. The last piece of these contracts was the wage increase, which has now been fulfilled. The town also completed all of its borrowing, with bond sales taking place in July. The town borrowed $19 million for three projects. $17.5 million for the police and fire substation. $1.26 million borrowed for the repair of the Linden Street Bridge. And lastly, $575,000 for a new fuel island at DPW. Mr. Stevens went on to discuss the new credit rating the town recently received. The ratings showed a stable outlook on the town with a rating of AA+, which is just below the highest level of AAA.
Some of the positives about the town were it's diverse, it's got a diverse and growing economy. It's got a stable operating environment, strong tax base, and stable financial performance.
Mr. Stevens finished his report discussing the revenue and expenses for the town as of June 30th. So far, the town received $11.3 million in revenue, which makes up 46% of what was budgeted. Mr. Stevens said the percentage is pretty consistent with the prior year. He went on to discuss the town's expenses, which is $10.7 million so far. This makes up 44% of the town's budget, which is the same percentage at this time last year. The next Select Board Meeting will take place on September 2nd in the Novak Room. See you there. The annual Connor's Climb 5K returns to Exeter in just a few weeks. Here's everything you need to know about the event. Every year in Exeter, the Connor's Climb 5K brings families, friends, and the community together, all united by one cause: suicide prevention and mental health awareness. The Connor's Climb Foundation was started in 2014 with a mother's mission after the tragic loss of her 14-year-old son, Connor.
Tara made it her mission so that no other family would have to go through what she went through.
What started as a local effort to bring suicide training to one school has now grown to 140 schools statewide.
Our training really focuses on teaching kids how to find that trusted adult, and when is it time for them to take the conversation that maybe they're having with their friends, and when it gets too serious, go find that trusted adult to get help for their friend who might be struggling.
Connor's Climb doesn't stop with these trainings. They empower young students to come together and stop the stigma around mental health through their Youth Ambassador program.
They develop their own volunteer plans that they want to do in their own community, and then we work with them one-on-one to guide them. It's really inspiring to see this next generation be more comfortable talking about mental health and then use their voices for good.
This year's 5K takes place on Saturday, September 21st, at the Seacoast School of Technology in Exeter. Registration begins at 8:00 a.m., and the run kicks off at night.
It's more than just a 5K, so it is a community event where everybody there is trying to get rid of the stigma that surrounds mental health. You're going to see a lot of friendly faces. Exeter is a very supportive community, so we love seeing a lot of people out there supporting Connor's Climb that day.
You can find more information about Connor's Climb and this year's 5K on their website at connersclimb.org. When longtime crossing guard for the Lincoln Street School, Russell Hoyt, passed away, members of the community rallied to memorialize him with a bench in Park Street Common.
Among many things, Russell Hoyt was a community staple. His years spent as a Lincoln Street School crossing guard left a lasting impression on students and parents alike who met him on a day-to-day basis. When news of his passing made its waves onto the Exeter, New Hampshire Community Forum, members of the community flooded the post with condolences and tales of Russell. One particular community member, Anna Grazer, was moved by his passing and decided that she wanted to help and support Russell and his family by opening a GoFundMe donations page in order to accrue enough money to get Russell a memorial bench through the Exeter Parks and Recs program. She was very successful.
I thought, oh my gosh, this man was at my own children's, he was a part of their daily school routine for years, every year that they were at Lincoln Street and Main Street School. He was there every day, and he always was calm and gentle and always protected them crossing the street. And even though that's a small part of everyone's day, I think they loved having that dependable, warm, gentle adult who was part of their day every day. It made them feel safe and protected and cared for. So I just decided to go for it and see what we could come up with, and I just dove in. The goal was achieved in, I want to say, under two weeks. I think it took a little more than a week. It was really heartwarming to see these donations come in from so many people. I think it was 63 or 64 donors came together to make it happen, and they actually raised a little bit more than our goal, so we had a little envelope of cash that we walked over and gave to Mrs. Hoyt.
Now, Russell's family meets with Parks and Rec to get a look at the bench for the first time.
So when Anna launched it, it was really a groundswell, and you got really people because Mr. Hoyt had been a crossing guard for so many years. Kids had grown up with him being a staple there. So we knew we wanted to do Park Street Common. Then we met with Anna on-site prior to, where do we want to place the bench? We tried to be systematic about it, so it's not in the playing field or like right in danger of being destroyed, because obviously, these are expensive benches. This was a great opportunity for the community to come together, honestly. Russell Hoyt had created such a legacy in town that it was an easy lift for those community members. But anytime the community can rally around an individual or a family, I mean, Exeter steps up and steps up in a big way. They have done it for numerous families, numerous loved ones. So I say the easiest thing for this is Exeter is a community, and there, go back to the old days of everyone knowing everyone, no matter what, and we'll take money out of their own pocket to help.
The bench now sits across from the playgrounds in Park Street Common, right down the street from Russell's home, within walking distance of those who loved him to spend time on the bench and reminisce. Of course, who could talk about Russell the most than his own wife, Anne Marie Hoyt?
One day, I happened to be home. I worked as telephone operator for New England Telephone, and he came, and we kind of were kidding back and forth. And apparently, I guess he liked what he saw. So the next time he came, he asked my mother how old I was. She said 20. So we finally called and he asked me to go out. I said, "I don't like, I don't go out with guys with mustaches." I was kidding, but he says to me, "Well, I'll shave it off." Well, that night when he came to get me, I went, "Oh my gosh, what did I do?" Russell had a great sense of humor. He just loved talking with people. He had a lot of other interests too, but especially talking to people. And when he got the job as the school crossing guard, he was so, so happy, and the kids loved him. One time in the winter, he came home and told me these two kids were coming down the sidewalk toward him carrying a hat, and he thought it was somebody's hat that got lost, and they wanted to know if he knew who it belonged to. He said they finally got to him, and he was saying, "I don't know who that belongs to." And they said, "Oh, no, we bought this for you to keep your head warm and your ears warm. It gets so cold down here." And he was so touched. He still have the hat. It looks like one of those World War II bomber hats, you know, with the flaps and everything. And when kids found out that he had passed away, and all of a sudden, he was getting all these people responding to it and saying how sorry they were. My husband made a difference in this world, and he did his best to do his job to the best of his ability. Whatever he undertook, he did. I miss him. It's been hard, but when he was getting ready to go home, I said to him, I said, "Russell, it's okay to go." I said, "The kids are going to help me, and I'm going to be okay. You can go now." I said, "I want you to go with God's angels to heaven, and you just know that I'm going to be okay." And I just, I thank God for the years that we had. We took care of each other, and love just makes the biggest difference. I keep finding cards that he sent me over the years, and when I feel down, they show up, and they're such a blessing. And I know he's watching, and I wish he could come and sit on his bench. Who knows? You never know, but I'm very grateful, and I thank God for every day that we had together.
The Beer and Chili Fest is just a few weeks away, which has gotten Gabe all worked up in the office.
Oh, chili. Hey, Dan, can I have some of your chili?
No, Gabe. You've already had chili every night this week.
I love chili.
I love chili. The Beer and Chili Festival.
That's right. The twenty twenty-five Powder Keg Beer and Chili Fest is coming back to Exeter. On Saturday, October fourth, from twelve PM to four PM, you can stop by Swayze Parkway and get your fill of beer and chili from vendors local to the Exeter area. There's no need to fear when chili and beer is here. With so much happening related to Pearpoint Park at different boards and committee meetings over the last year, we wanted to recap a year's worth of committee progress in one video. In our next segment, we stitched together all of our updates about Pearpoint Park to give you the full history and an update of where we are at today.
In December of twenty twenty-three, a tired and weathered weary fence sat just off the sidewalk on Exeter's historic downtown Water Street.
Behind it, nothing but grass and remnants of a structure torn asunder by a roaring fire in June of nineteen ninety, where it has remained dormant ever since. This hold-up little alcove on twenty-three Water Street has been given a new life as its now previous owners, Nancy Phillips and Elliot Berkowitz, have graciously donated the land to the town of Exeter, albeit given the stipulation that it be converted into a brand-new park named Pearpoint Park. The town's planning board, Historic District Commission, Heritage Commission, and Conservation Commission all eagerly voted to support accepting the donation. At a special select board meeting on the morning of December twenty-eighth, the residents gathered to voice their support for the land acquisition, and the board voted unanimously to accept the donation.
For those who don't know, this is also the murder scene in my latest book. It's because it has been an eyesore to our downtown for decades. I think we need to look at the source of this donation. Nancy and Elliot have done more to improve the downtown, I think, than anyone else I know.
Say, yes, I walk downtown Exeter every day. Love the herons, love the eagles. Uh, would love to have another spot to watch them from. And I agree, this is another way to welcome people into our town.
This is an opportunity that is very generous from these guys to, to make the offer, and I think there's a track record in town of many groups and organizations, committees and commissions that are willing to step up, uh, do the work, find grants, volunteer time. And I think, um, the support in the room shows that there's people here willing, uh, to lend support, to stay involved, and not let this be something that is voted on and then becomes a burden.
Speaking with town manager Rustine, we get a glimpse of how the town feels given their newly acquired piece of land.
Once we went through the due diligence process and we understood where everything was, and we began to reflect a lot on the fact that we were actually going to have a really nice addition to our downtown, uh, with this park, it was, uh, clear to us all that this was a great opportunity for the town to be able to take advantage of, and, uh, we appreciate the genuine generosity of the donors involved, Elliot and Nancy, and we think it's going to be an asset to serve the town for years to come. So the core benefit of having a park like Pearpoint Park will be that people will come to the town and come to the downtown specifically with the knowledge that there is a downtown park that exists and a place for them to go and sit and enjoy lunch, um, just enjoy the scenic views of the river, and, uh, really just a place to make for their own to be part of the downtown. That's an open space.
The select board formed the Pearpoint Park Stakeholders Advisory Committee in early twenty twenty-four and tasked it with surveying the public and creating recommendations for the future park. The committee got right to work, launching an initial survey and highlighting the current state of the park for residents to see.
So it's a pretty small space. Um, we're thinking of it like a pocket park. It's got a pretty steep grade to start with, but that doesn't mean we're gonna end up that way. We have this fantastic granite on-site that actually, you know, looks like a pile of rubble, but it's pretty cool because it's antique granite. Uh, that might be a nice feature to use in some capacity. And then we have this amazing river view. The park extends to just shy of this cement wall here. That is owned by New Hampshire Fish and Game, and that won't be changing. That is not our property. Um, but the rest of this can become whatever we might envision.
While the future of the park still remained in discussions at the committee level, volunteers kept the momentum going, working with town departments to install a new fence at the property to allow passersby the ability to see the park and imagine what could be there. In April twenty twenty-four, the committee took feedback from seven hundred fifty participants during the initial survey and earlier discussions to come up with three potential design concepts. Option one would feature an elevated deck that extends from the sidewalk all the way to the river's edge. This concept would include eighteen hundred square feet of fully accessible gathering space, a cutout in the deck for native trees, playful seating, and native vegetation. Option two, known as the Shady Bosque, would feature a gently sloped walkway down to the edge of the river. It would include fourteen hundred square feet of gathering space, movable seating, and an overlook onto the river. Option three, the Serpentine Path, would turn the site into a gently sloped winding path that leads to a curved overlook of the water. This design would feature rain gardens, planted mounds of artwork, and seating pods with five hundred twenty-five square feet of accessible gathering space. With these new designs, the committee launched a second survey, gathering five hundred seventy responses. The committee presented the findings of this survey along with their recommendations at the June thirtieth select board meeting. The survey results had a clear winner in the Shady Bosque design.
So you'd enter the park kind of in the middle of the parcel, um, where there would be a lower retaining wall potentially with a entrance sign or something sort of identifying where you are in a sense of place. Um, and perhaps a couple of benches. Um, and then you're quickly brought to, um, number two on the plan, which is the slope to walk.
At the June thirtieth meeting, the committee had four asks for the select board.
First request is regarding the concept and theme. Um, we would be seeking your, um, approval of the shady cons- the Shady Bosque as the concept, um, as the vision for Pearpoint Park, along with the theme of local flora and fauna, history of the river, and environmental protection. These are in order of like kind of what we need to move forward.
After a brief discussion with questions related to potential dog access for the park and fundraising or budget timelines, the board then decided to authorize the committee to move forward with their items and work with the town manager's office to draft the CIP item for the budget. With the first four official goals or committee charges now complete, the Pearpoint Park stakeholders are moving on to their fifth objective: investigating all sources of funding opportunities, including grants, donations, funding partners, and sponsorships. To learn more about the committee and the project to turn twenty-three Water Street into Pearpoint Park, visit the town website, exeternh.gov slash PPSAC.
For our last segment, the Exeter Police and Fire Department helped fulfill JJ's Make-A-Wish.
Last week, a special surprise was put together for a special boy. While the family was away, friends and organizers from the New Hampshire Make-A-Wish put together backyard games, food and snacks, and presents, all in preparation to celebrate his wish day. Friends and family lined up in a row in anticipation as JJ pulled into the parking lot. JJ, now in recovery from cancer, got his big wish granted: getting to go on vacation with his family. But today, he gets to be a modern-day superhero. From capes and superpowers to the everyday firefighter, JJ and his friends jumped quickly to play in the backyard. But he had one last surprise waiting for him just down the street. A special day for a special boy. Getting the chance to have his wishes granted is a very beautiful thing to see. And with a big smile on his face, it's safe to say it was a wish well made.
That does it for this week's Beast of a Report. Be sure to like, share, and subscribe to help us spread the word. Head over to the town website and subscribe to the town email newsletter to get this show and other local news sent straight to your inbox. We'll be back on September twelfth for the next edition of the show. But before we go, we want to wish a big happy birthday to Bob's little baby, Olivia, who turned the big one yesterday. For Exeter TV, I'm Dan Monchek, and this has been the Exeter Biweekly Report. Have a great weekend, Exeter. Reports and committee meetings over the last year. What happened? Is it not good? Wow. You getting that? Wow. Just thought that might have been fitting. I don't know.
Okay, good evening, Exeter, and welcome back to the September second, two thousand twenty-five Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting. Uh, the board called the meeting to order at six fifteen, went into non-public till approximately ten of seven, then we conducted a board interview in the Wheelwright Room. And here we are back for our regular business meeting, beginning at seven o'clock. Good evening to my colleagues, respective town staff, those at home watching. I would like to start by introducing the board. To my right is Selectman Dan Chartran. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Our vice chair, Selectwoman Molly Cowan, good evening.
Hi, everyone.
To my left, our clerk, Selectwoman Nancy Belanger, good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Selectwoman Julie Gilman, good evening.
Good evening.
We have our interim town manager to the right, Melissa Roy, good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Our recording secretary, Joanna Bartel, good evening. And my name is Nico Papakosandis. Um, next on the agenda is public comment. It's an opportunity for the public to come forward. Uh, there do not appear to be any public here, uh, nor is anyone online. So we will move forward to the approval of the minutes from our last meeting, which was August eighteenth. Are there any amendments or revisions?
I did have a revision.
Okay.
Um, and I'm sorry, I've gotta find it. My apologies. Um, in my select board report, um, the way the minutes got written, it sounded like the conversation with the tree company was at the Conservation Commission. And that's, they were two separate things I was reporting on. Um, so if we could create a new paragraph after they made some tough choices and say, uh, "I also attend," or "Selectman Chartran also attended a meeting with the tree contractor, contractor from Unitil, and the tree contractor listened carefully." And that should take care of it.
Okay. Okay. Did you get that, Joanna?
Thank you. Sorry I ran those two things together.
That's okay. Any other revisions? And seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Exeter Select Board regular meeting minutes of August 18th, 2025, as amended.
So moved. Second.
So motion and second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Posed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Unfortunately, we have a few resignations to consider this evening from various boards and committees, most of them folks that are relocating. But nonetheless, we could take them up one at a time. The first is from Pete Cameron, who has tendered his resignation from the planning board after a very, very long term of service, and he will be greatly missed. And I had the pleasure of the one year I was the select board to the, to the planning board. I sat next to Pete most nights, and I learned so much from him in that one year.
Yes.
He, it's going to be a very, very big loss, so.
Yes, and he was also the planning board representative to the Housing Advisory Committee. And he is missed.
With that, I would entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Pete Cameron from the planning board.
So moved.
Second.
So motion and second. Is there any comment or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Posed? It's unanimous, and thank you, Pete, for your years of service. Next, we have resignation from the Recreation Advisory Board, from Danielle Kapalbo. And I don't know, Selectwoman Belanger, if you had a few words?
Other than thanking her, she says in her resignation that she hadn't been there in a few years, and I have not met her because I wasn't the rep at the time. So, but I do thank her for her service.
Thank you.
No, I, I also don't know her, but thank you for her service as well.
All right.
Maybe it was Julie. Julie, was she? It's okay.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll just let it go and thank her for her service.
We appreciate it and keep us in mind for the future, for future board.
Well, I remember when we interviewed her, and we were really excited that she was joining, so hopefully she'll consider coming back in the future. With that, I would entertain a motion to accept the resignation from the Recreation Advisory Board from Danielle Kapalbo.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Posed? It's unanimous. Next, from the Pear Point Park Stakeholders Advisory Committee, Maisie Sanderson, who we just appointed to a voting member. And Maisie is actually moving out of town to relocate to Alton, although she still will be working in the area and has committed to informally continue to work with the committee on some of their fundraising efforts. So we'll look forward to that because she's incredibly talented. So we thank her for her brief service. I would entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Maisie Sanderson from the Pear Point Park Stakeholders Advisory Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Posed? It's unanimous. We have two resignations from the ZBA, one's from Mark Lemos and the other from Teresa Page, both of whom are relocating as well. So I would entertain a motion to accept the resignations of Mark Lemos and Teresa Page, respectively, from the Zoning Board of Adjustment.
So moved.
Second.
So motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Posed? It's unanimous. And finally, we have a letter from the Chair of the Zoning Board of Adjustment, Robert Pryor, with the board's recommendation that the select board consider appointing Laura Montagno from an alternate to a voting member.
So moved. What would the year be? I gave my list to Melissa, sorry.
Melissa, do you have that off?
It's in Bob's letter. April 2027.
27?
And that's her current one, right?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
So I would, I would entertain a motion then to appoint Laura Montagno as a voting member of the Zoning Board of Adjustment with a term to expire April 2027.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Posed? It's unanimous. And finally, we had an interview this evening with Susan Drinker, who would like to volunteer for the 250 Celebration Commission. I would entertain a motion to appoint Susan Drinker to the 250 Celebration Commission with no term.
Some, go ahead, Julie.
So moved.
Second.
So motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Posed? It's unanimous. Thank you and welcome, Susan.
Mr. Chair.
Please.
Before we move on, I forgot to ask you about this earlier, but could we, we have a moment of silence for John Merkel, who was a longtime volunteer?
Thank you for bringing that up. Did you have anything you want to say, or do, would you like to?
I hope he basically can say it without crying.
That's okay.
I worked with John for 18 years as a vol, as a volunteer here, but he volunteered for the town a few years more than that. He was behind the driving force to establish the Heritage Commission, and its subcommittee for demolition review, and for applying to get ourselves recognized by the Secretary of Interior for being a certified local government. His work in preservation is well-known throughout the state. We, we supported his nomination to this award, the award from the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance for his work in preservation, which he received six months ago. He was a good friend, and we shared, bringing up identical twins. He will be sadly missed, and his service is in September.
Okay.
So.
Thank you, Julie. So at this time, I'd like to ask everyone to, in memory of John Merkel, observe a moment of silence, please. Thank you. May his memory be eternal.
Thank you, Nick.
Selectwoman Gilman, thank you for sharing those thoughts. Okay. Sorry, Steve, but with that. Our Public Works Director, Steve Cronin, with an update on the.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. At your August 18th meeting, Steve Dalton, the Water Source Superintendent, recommended that the board consider implementing water use restrictions in accordance with Chapter 16 of the town ordinance. That recommendation was in response to a change in the drought status for the seacoast region from abnormally dry to moderate drought. Thankfully, the board had the foresight to implement Level 2 restrictions because it's hasn't rained since then. And since that was published, we've already seen an overall decrease in the daily demand from water users. So they've certainly helped us out by responding quickly. Last Thursday, the U.S. Drought Monitor in New Hampshire was further expanded to moderate drought to cover 85% of the state. Based on the current levels of our surface and groundwater sources, and with below-average precipitation and the extended forecast, we're recommending that the board consider increasing the water use restriction to Level 4, which is the highest level in the ordinance. A Level 4 restriction would prohibit water use for landscape watering, the filling of swimming pools greater than 100 gallons, washing of streets, driveways, sidewalks, or other impervious areas, and washing of vehicles or boats at a non-commercial facility. We've made some operational changes to the running of both of our plants to try to navigate the ongoing drought. We've shifted away from the river as our primary source and are now relying on groundwater and stored water in the reservoir to carry us through. We're periodically transferring water from the river to the reservoir when conditions allow, but we certainly need these restrictions to help us over the next couple of weeks.
Would you like the motion to be until further notice?
Until further notice, yeah. We're certainly happy to come back and provide an update at the next meeting.
Okay. And obviously, we'll change the website tomorrow morning if that's voted. Are there any questions for Steve?
I have none.
All right. I might have spaced over it, but this includes private wells?
Yes.
I've been asked that question a few times, so.
Okay. Good question, thank you.
So can you just repeat what the Level 4 restriction is?
Yep. So Level 4 restrictions prohibit water use for landscape watering, so irrigation of lawns, things to that effect. The filling of swimming pools greater than 100 gallons, washing of streets, driveways, sidewalks, and other impervious areas, and washing of vehicles or boats at a non-commercial facility. There are a number of exemptions that are in the ordinance, too many to read here tonight, but we will make sure that we include those in the notice that we publish.
I would like to say thank you to the residents who are, are paying attention, listening, and serving. Thank you for pointing that out.
Anything else for Director Cronin? And I would entertain a motion to issue a Level 4 water restriction effective September 3rd, 2025, until further notice.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Posed? It's unanimous. Thank you, Director Cronin.
Thank you.
Respecting staff's time, if the board would indulge, I'd like to jump out of order briefly and have Deputy Chief McCain come forward with a donation acceptance, if the board's okay with that? Deputy Chief McCain?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Do you want me to kick this off?
Please.
Okay, cool. So this is a pleasure, because I'm asking, I'm coming before the board tonight to ask your guys' permission to accept a donation to the PD. Their donation would be for a ballistic vest for the brand-new Patrol K9. It's pretty interesting, the head trainer from Fox Hill Farm Kennels that we purchased Bobo from, our police canine, he trained Bobo ever since they first got him as a little baby and till they delivered him to us, so he has a vested interest. He would be the chief donator of this under the Fox Hill Farm name, but he has a vested interest in Bobo, and they do this for all their dogs, or they like to try to do this, and he has a special bond with this one. This person's name is Sean Castro. Like I said, he's the head trainer of Fox Hill Farm Kennels. It's a, where are we going there? He wanted to donate the vest for Bobo's safety and explain that this is a service they like to provide to all dogs. The ballistic vest is roughly $3,000 and would be utilized in certain known dangerous situations as a protective measure. Each vest is individually sized and crafted for the specific canine it was designed for and is stab and slash proof. It works like our officer's ballistic vest that we wear, that we put our troops out on the, on the road with, and it's, its main job is to protect the dog's vital organs when we put it in harm's way, if we do that. But it doesn't limit the dog's mobility as well, so. It's just another tool. I think it's a great gesture. The only prerequisite for the donation is that he would just like us to credit when we do a social media post or make a formal credit to him in loving memory of Duke, which was his first dog, and that's why he got into this whole business. So that's the only strings attached to it, is that we, we say it's in loving memory for Duke, and it will hopefully protect our, our town's asset of Bobo.
Fantastic. Are there any questions from the board? Deputy Chief, so the, the name of the donor, is it the Castro family? Is it Sean Castro?
Sean Castro.
Sean Castro? Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to accept a donation from Sean Castro for the ballistic canine vest for our canine Bobo in the amount of $3,000. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, so I was, I wanted to make sure we, you'll do it.
With the condition that the, that the police department acknowledges that it's in loving memory of Duke.
So moved. I jumped ahead on that one.
I'll, oh, you got it.
So motion and second. Any discussion?
Just thank them.
Yep.
That was, that was a generous donation, and I appreciate it.
And we wanted to get Duke into the motion, so.
Yes, it was important to get Duke in there.
There's a motion and a second. No further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Posed? It's unanimous. Thank you, Deputy Chief.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Sure. Have a good night. Next, we have our Fire Chief, Justin Pizon, for the next two discussion items. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good to see the rest of you tonight. Thanks for having me. All right, so I wanted to come, I didn't, it's been a while since I spoke about RSI, which was the Rapid Sequence Intubation Initiative that you supported last December. All precipitated by the fact that Exeter Hospital's ALS service had been dissolved, and the one skill we used them for was RSI. So it was a big deal to us to, to move forward and get it ourselves. Probably was overdue, but that certainly gave us the push in the direction to get it done. So I wanted to provide you guys a quick update and a couple thank yous again. Last December, I approached the select board looking for your support, and one of the items we didn't have at the time was a portable ventilator, and you supported us buying one of those. That was one of the key pieces the state requires. The other were their video laryngoscopes, and I had made past mention that those were donated by the Riverwoods Charitable Funds Committee, and we were super grateful for that. That was about a $5,000 investment in that donation, so that was a big deal. So we get that, we get the expensive stuff out of the way, and then it was the training of the individuals, which took us some time. We used our outsourced training provider for EMS. He came in, we did our training, it was both classroom and hands-on. We set up our quality assurance and quality improvement program, and all the boxes were checked. Deputy Chief Ryan Booth, who's behind me tonight, did the heavy lifting on submitting the application, and I'm happy to report on July 21st, the Exeter Fire Department paramedics were credentialed in RSI.
Congratulations.
So it was a huge milestone for us. It was a big deal. Quick side note, we had a tragedy a couple weeks after that where RSI was utilized. It put the individual in position of their life to be maintained at the time. That person has since passed, but the family released a statement that potentially that the four individuals were saved by organ donation. So I look at that as a huge success, and that's, that's a big deal. And that's, I'm sure the families that received those organs feel the same way.
And without RSI, that wouldn't have been possible.
I specifically asked that question, probably was, yeah, the outcome would not have been the same, especially if that person went to Portsmouth Hospital, that would be definitive care in a, in a trauma such as the one I'm talking about. So that was a big deal to get them to Portsmouth Hospital, and having that definitive airway already in place protecting that airway was, was lifesaving. The outcome wasn't fantastic, but still, it was, it was the best outcome given the situation they were in, so. And if four lives are saved through that, that is, that is fantastic. So that was a big deal. Ongoing requirements, not a huge deal, six hours a year per paramedic. That is the classroom portion, but the one area where we knew we were going to deficiency, the one part I, I can't control is years of service. You need two years of service as a paramedic, so I can't control that. But the one area we knew we were going to have trouble with was doing intubations on live individuals. It's not something we do every day, so I have been, I don't want to say pestering, but I have been collaborating strongly with Exeter Hospital. And I will tell you that with a lot of, a lot of work, a lot of patience, on August 20th, I was notified by Dr. Carla Greco, who's the head of anesthesia at Exeter Hospital, that they will indeed, after working with Beth Israel in, in Massachusetts and New Hampshire, approved our ability to get into the OR and work with the anesthesia.
Fantastic.
So excited.
Milestone. 23 years in the fire department, and I don't know if this ever happened before where somebody was able to enter the OR at Exeter Hospital and perform this skill. Now, these are skills that we're not, we're not training how to do it. They're all credentialed in the skill already, but obviously, when you work with people that are doing hundreds of intubations a year versus people that are doing a handful of intubations a year, this opportunity is like, it's, I'm beyond grateful. This is fantastic. Dr. Greco came from the Baltimore hospital system. She worked in Baltimore, and they had paramedics in their OR every single Thursday. And I'm sure they have hundreds of paramedics in Baltimore, but still, she came from that background, and without her advocating top to bottom at the hospital, this would never have happened, so I am so grateful. It's, I'm beyond grateful.
Mr. Chair, can I make a comment?
Please.
If you would allow me.
Sure, absolutely.
One of the things that I was most excited about when you were appointed chief was your ability to get this type of stuff done.
I appreciate it.
And that, this is in no way disparaging prior chiefs. They all have their strengths and, and, you know, hopefully complemented by their staff, but you and your staff have this amazing ability now, this amazing facility to liaise with these organizations, and I really value that, and I appreciate that you do that.
I appreciate you saying that very much. Thank you. It was, it's a big deal. My goal, I said, was to get them in there probably 10 hours a year. I think if you could do a couple five-hour shifts, a 10-hour day, and she was like, that, that's it? That's all you want to do? I said, let's start someplace. I'd like to have, build some relationships. That's where that comes from, is. That's where that comes from, is building bridges and building relationships. So I'd like to see them have a chance to get to know our staff, let them be comfortable with our staff, trust our staff. Obviously, this is an intervention in a controlled setting, but still, a super important skill that you have to do right. You have to do it right the first time. And this will be a learning opportunity to work with those anesthesiologists, because they're going to be able to give tips, tricks, and all the things they've learned over their years of doing these procedures. So we're really looking forward to it. It's, it's, I walked around on water last week. I was skipping around here, so. Christina downstairs saw me, and she was like, "I remember when you were skipping around here last week." I truly was. I was so happy. It was such a milestone. I'm so excited about this initiative.
Well, thank you to the doctor too, right, who brought that successful program from Baltimore here?
Yes, it's fantastic.
And was able to, to relate the importance of that. That's exciting.
Yeah, she appreciates the teaching, and she lives local, and she's like, "Jeez, I'd really like to know that they know what they're doing when they show up and hire anybody." So, it makes sense. So.
Good job.
So we're grateful for that. So, we'll continue. I mean, RSI's been, we're successful in that. We're moving forward. And at this time, we're credentialed, and we have the OR opportunity coming up. Dr. Greco, our next training is on, is the third Wednesday of the month, September 17th, is our, we kick off our fall session now of trainings on the third Wednesday of the month. Dr. Greco will be coming to our training on the 17th, introduce herself, field any questions we might have, and we'll be scheduling people shortly thereafter. So, yeah, it's fantastic.
Well, congratulations. Well done.
I appreciate that.
And thank you for your efforts. Appreciate that.
It's great. I also want to touch briefly on the billing. So, as I'm sure most of you are aware, Senate Bill 245, it prohibits surprise billing. And just to restate what that is, Medicare only gives you a fixed rate. No matter what you do, procedure-wise, Medicare is going to pay you a certain dollar figure. It's not even close to covering the cost of what it is to run an ambulance service. Historically speaking, ambulance, especially private ambulance services that were in rural New Hampshire that have the same resources we have here, they made up that billing by charging their people that had commercial insurance a rate that was much higher to cover their costs. And obviously, that was, they called it surprise billing, and they wanted, they wanted to outlaw surprise billing, which they have done. I'm going to read quickly something from the state, just what it was. On August 1st, 2025, New Hampshire Governor Kelly Ayotte signed Senate Bill 245, which outlawed surprise billing for ground ambulance services and establishes a framework for a fair reimbursement rate for ambulance providers. The law prohibits balanced billing for ambulance services starting January 1st, 2026, and sets a temporary reimbursement rate of 325% of the federal Medicare rate. There comes some strings attached. I'll have to do cost reporting and such. The one, so, I am not fluent in reading through Senate bills, that is for sure. So, I contacted Comstar. Comstar is our billing agency that we contract with. Obviously, have a vested interest, because they're paid based on, their commissions based on what we collect. And they have attorneys on staff. So I met with an attorney on August 13th. And where do I go with this? What do I do for the town of Exeter, and how do we handle this? We already have an existing contract with Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield, so I was, through conversation with her, come January 1st, we are automatically enrolled in this new program without us doing anything at all. Not sure I love that. So, I am in doing digging, and I'm going to be honest with you, Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield, when it comes to contracts for ambulances, are impossible to contact. I have contacted Health Trust, a little helpful, provided me a phone number and an email. The email was missing part of it, because the email came back to me, and the phone number was a perpetual loop I could never get out of. So, I never was able to speak to somebody. I have left a couple voicemails to that same person, the Health Trust, and she was only trying to help me, because this really isn't in her purview either, but they're trying to get me to the right spot. It is just as challenging as the hospital was, honestly. So, right now, I don't really have a ton of information on the billing part. I just wanted to mention it while I was going to be here anywhere. This is the, I had three boxes I need to check. The RSI credentialing, the OR time, and the billing. And I said I'd come once I had the majority of those boxes checked. So I am. But I wanted to at least give you an update. I will come back before the end of the year, once I have more information, when I know what the billing rates are going to be. I can give you a quick idea that the billing rates for right now, for us, the, the, right now, Medicare reimburses $463, $463.17 for a basic life support emergency transport. So easy math, 325%, that was $1,505 per transport. So that's obviously a significant increase. In fairness, it's about 76% of our runs are Medicaid and Medicare. So we're only talking 24% of our call volume when it comes to billing. However, that's a significant number when you start to add 325% onto it. I will tell you that through conversations over the past couple years, we entertained the notion of perhaps going to collections with some of our unpaid bills. I just, I have a bad taste in my mouth about that. So, I think that if these rates get to where they're going to be without us having to do anything, I think that we'll maintain, I will be advocating we maintain a non-aggressive billing policy. The last thing I want to do is be in the service of putting people in medical debt. That's not what I'm here for. I'm here to help people. So, but when things come up, more information's available. I'll come back to the board. I'll give you some updates, but I am working on it. I don't have a ton, but I wanted to at least give you an idea that I'm working on it, and when I have more, I'll certainly come back.
Okay, please do. Any questions?
Obviously, you're keeping the finance director apprised.
Cory's been involved in all of my conversations.
Good to know.
Yes.
I like that.
Most of my conversations started with Russ at the time, especially with the non-aggressive billing policy. But yes, Cory's been involved in all of our decisions.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Chief Pizon. Great. Thank you, Chief.
I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Great work.
Okay, next, we have our interim town manager with some permit verbiage updates, please.
Did you have any interest in taking out of order, Greg, or would you like me to go first?
Yeah, we can, we can take Greg. Sorry, Greg, I didn't see you there. Let me find you.
For standard permits and approvals.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Melissa. We're here for one more project to be approved for park improvement fund spending, our spray pad renovation. This one is pretty relevant, considering the drought we're in now. So, the spray pad was first constructed in 2007 by the Water Department, and holds a distinction of being the first facility of its kind in New Hampshire. Since its initial structure, the spray pad has aged, obviously, resulting in significant water loss. Some days, we lose up to 500 gallons per day into the ground. So, we are recommending redoing it. We have a valuable asset in our department in Scott Thomas, who has built many water attractions with his days at Water Country. So, under his guidance, we're going to, as long as you approve it, redevelop how the spray pad functions. So one of the things, and I really, I'm going to go deep dive into pool maintenance here, for those that want to read it. So the town uses chloramines as their sanitation for their water. As a pool end-user, chloramines is something we don't want. So, it's a constant battle, especially if we're losing so much. The current system holds about 17.5, I'm sorry, 17.50 gallons. So, when you add 500, it throws the balance off, making it extremely difficult to meet state standards for pool cleanliness. So what we would propose is, currently, there's a tank in the parking lot that is exposed to a lot of contaminants. We would relocate a new tank into the inner part of the pool in the green space currently beside the spray pad. We then would put it in in a circular pattern to circulate it. One of the things where the spray pad now is, we turn it off every night, so there's no continuous filtration. Our pool filters 24/7, so it's always balanced when we come in the morning. This would allow us to keep the water properly balanced, and not only fix the leaks and save thousands of gallons, but also meet those state standards. The state is understanding that, out of the tap, the combined chlorines or chloramines are very high in Exeter, which is not, it's, it's safe, but it, for a pool user, they totally understand that. And then we would just use our alternative pump to then spray the, pump out that chlorinated, well-filterated water, and pump it to our, our elements. We would also repair a couple elements that we've had to disconnect over the last couple years, because we know there are massive water losses out of those. So between all of those things, it would become more of efficient, easier to balance, more sustainable, because it wouldn't be losing as much water, as well as brightening it up. One of the last steps in the whole process would be coating the spray pad surface in a rubber surfacing, unless we get a grant that I'll mention in a few minutes. That would seal all the cracks, because again, we're, we want to make sure all the penetrations are gone, but also provide a nice cushiony surface, so when little kids, and we see lots of them, little toddlers running, and they just fall over, and it's pavement, or it's concrete. So it's, it's rough, rough on the knees. This would be a little more softer, a little more forgiving. So, we did our due diligence. We scrambled. A lot of the vendors for a specific tank we're looking to put in would either not give us a quote or gave us such an astronomically high quote that it wasn't cost-effective. We did find two vendors. Covered Bridge Construction of Manchester is one that came in considerably low, well-respected. We got several references from Hillsborough County, New Boston School District. I mean, they're, people raved about them. Concrete Cutting would be a sole source. More concrete cutting, we've seen them all over the seacoast. They've done lots of work for the town over the last few years. They're, they're the people you want to cut the concrete. And then, Covered Bridge Concrete would then finish off digging out the pipes, because the pipes are located 42 inches down. We then, my staff would repair the pipes, re-pipe it in. Covered Bridge would then fill it in, reconcrete it. And lastly, our staff would put not only the coating on, but fix everything. So, under Scott's tutelage, we are very confident that this will become a better product and extend the life of the spray pad. Again, as I mentioned last meeting, we had over 9,000 people, and this is a vital part of the pool operation, because not only is it a way for the little kids or those, but it's one of our big ADA elements in the pool as well. So, if you would indulge me, we are looking to spend approximately $34,850. I have several, or three, four vendor, four motions for you to go through. And then, lastly, before you do that, we did apply for a grant through Life Floor. We had pursued this as an option to be a coating on the spray pad. But again, that was too cost-effective. It is a nice, high-end finish on the spray pad. Life Floor gives away two full installations free a year. All over, it's a good demo for them to try to spread. We did apply for it, and if it, it's well over $100,000 of a service if we got that grant. We would know by the time next spring, when we put the coating on, if we got the grant or not, and we would come to you for a full acceptance.
You done?
All done.
All right. So, rolling back, we have four different parts to the project that will take up this evening, totaling $34,850 to come out of the Park Improvement Fund, of which there's $48,895. And if we approve all four of these things, you'll have $14,045 for the remainder of the year. Do you see any other big expenses coming up?
Not at this time.
That will surpass that, 14 grand?
Nope, not at this time.
And if you are approved for the grant, the grant would cover 100% of the project?
For the, the rubber mats.
For the rubber mats. Would that affect any of the work that you've already done that we're paying the $34,850?
Nope. We wouldn't be ordering the Dura-Rubber coating until the spring, when we're ready to apply it. So, that was, that would be the very last step, Mr. Chair, that we would hold off until we were 100% sure we didn't get the grant. But that would be the only thing it would affect.
Okay. So in other words, if you spend the $34,000 and you get the grant, and you've done the work, that's not going to impact, we're not going to have to redo things?
Nope. Because I wanted to spend the full $34,000.
Okay, all right. Are there any questions for Mr. Bison?
I just have one. So, if you're not going to order the Dura-Rubber coating until the spring, would it be better to not vote on that tonight and wait and see if you get the grant?
I'd like to work with Cory and earmark it, so that way we know if something does arise in December or January, we know that money is set aside.
Okay.
It's also wise to do it now, to be committed, in case something happens with their funding.
True.
Does that help with the grant? I just don't, I mean, we're getting really low on that fund. That's why I was, the fund balance is really low. So, to commit it would take that out of the, if there was something that happens between now and December. But if this is the avenue that you think is best, then, okay.
And if, if we got the grant, I would come back to the board to vote not to.
No, I understand that. I'm just thinking if something two months from now happens, you've got $14,000 left. That's all. Okay.
I, I like the line of questioning there. Can I ask, though, do you anticipate, if we were to wait, would this cost more next year?
No.
No? Okay.
Yeah. So we're, we're committed, we're committing the money without knowing if we really need it yet.
We can hold off on the rubber coating, if that.
I just wanted to understand the reasoning why we're.
You wanted to get it approved so you could earmark it? Would it go away if we didn't do this?
No.
Okay.
No, just committed.
So there's no need to earmark, in other words?
No.
It's like putting suspenders on a boat, kind of.
Kind of.
Yeah. Okay. So, I, I agree then. Let's, let's hold off. Create, create some flexibility.
Sure.
In case there is an emergency situation.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Okay, so that would eliminate $7,500, if I'm reading this correctly?
Four, $4,500, because $4,500 is for the Dura-Rubber coating, and $3,000 is for the piping we need to.
That will need to be.
So you still need the $3,000 for the piping?
Still need the $3,000 to buy all the PVC.
Okay.
So that motion would become $3,000?
Specifically for the pipes?
Yep.
PVC pipes and fittings?
And you're sure we're not messing you up if we do that?
No. All right. Is everyone okay with that?
Fine with me.
All right. Now I'm going to start with that motion, if I may, while it's fresh. "I would entertain a motion to authorize the Parks and Recreation Department to utilize $3,000 from the Parks Improvement Fund to purchase PVC pipes and fittings to go towards the work completing the Dan Healy Spray Pad renovation."
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Unanimous. Okay. "I would then entertain a motion to authorize the Parks and Recreation Department to contract with Covered Bridge Construction in the amount of $11,000 to be paid from the Parks Improvement Fund to install the 3,000-gallon tank for the Dan Healy Spray Pad."
So moved. Second.
So motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? It's unanimous. "I would entertain a motion to authorize the Parks and Recreation Department to contract with more concrete cutting in the amount of $3,600 to be paid from the Parks Improvement Fund to renovate the Dan Healy Spray Pad."
So moved. Second.
So motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? It's unanimous. And then finally, I'd entertain a motion to authorize the Parks and Recreation Department to contract with Covered Bridge Construction in the amount of $12,750 to be paid from the Parks Improvement Fund. This contract is for the purpose of clearing and exposing the pipes to facilitate repairs, backfilling, and reconcreting those areas at the Dan Healy Spray Pad.
So moved. Second.
So motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Posed? Motion unanimous. I think you have one more, but good luck on the grant.
Yes.
You keep us posted on that. All right.
In your packet, you will, I believe, see the application. We have some fabulous news. We have been selected as another recipient of Exeter Hospital's grant for our senior programming. So it's approximately $30,000, again, that they would be supplying us for senior programming, in which that goes to programming, but also to help offset some of the costs of our senior recreation coordinator. recreation coordinator.
And this is similar to the one last year, correct?
Correct. Yes.
That's great news. Congratulations on securing this.
David Tohe has done an outstanding job and he is the kudos for getting this grant.
Thank you, David. Any questions or comments?
I'd none other than thank you to Exeter Hospital.
I would entertain a motion to accept the community grant agreement from Exeter Hospital in the amount of $30,000 for senior programming and further authorize the park and rec director to sign the corresponding documents.
So moved.
Second.
There was a motion and a second by Selectwoman Gilman. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thanks, Greg.
Thank you. Okay.
All right. Thank you to the board for indulging us to get Mr. Beeson home.
Bye, Greg.
Melissa.
Thank you. I would also like to say thank you to the board to let the staff go home early. So I really, really appreciate that. This is some housekeeping. You remember a few weeks back, we updated ordinance eight in which it had an updated RSA. So we then went and looked at the forms necessary for, or in reference to that ordinance and have two changes that need to be made. One, updating our liability insurance that's required and just a reference to the 802 and where they can find that. So this is, you'll see on the forms in your packet, the yellow highlighted, it's just an acceptance of these changes to the permits to be used in the future.
Are there any questions of Ms. Roy?
None.
I'd like to take this up into two motions if we can. I would first entertain a motion to add the, to accept adding the following language to the peddling, soliciting, vending, and the townhouse common mobile vending permit applications. The following language, quote, "Liability insurance required. Certificate of insurance and endorsement provisions to be submitted with completed application. Required amounts: general liability, bodily injury, property damage. $1 million per occurrence. $2 million aggregate. The town of Exeter must be listed as additional insured," end quote.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes. And I would entertain a motion to accept adding the following language to the peddling, soliciting, vending, and townhouse common mobile vending. The following language, add quote, "Complete ordinance 802 is available on the Exeter website at exeternewhampshire.gov/bcc/town-ordinances or upon request," end quote.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Roy. Okay. We've been hearing a lot of the tree committee, committee's work from Selectman Sharktrader through the last year or so. We've talked about how the tree committee has sort of been defunct since, I think, 2012 in a formal manner with certain work that's going on and just the fact that this group of people are meeting quite regularly and doing some good work. Ms. Roy and I talked about formally bringing it back to the board to reinstate the tree committee. We've put together just a draft charge that hopefully the committee can take a look at and revise and bring back to the board for approval. We also put together just a suggestion of membership structure, which certainly we can discuss this evening and revise accordingly. Once, if we reinstate this evening, we would ask first all of the members that are sitting on the informal committee if they'd like to come forward for formal interview as is procedure here in Exeter, and then we would take that up. Mr. Sharktrader, since you've been the, I guess, select board rep to this committee, did you have some thoughts?
Yeah. I, I actually like everything that is in the packet in terms of structure and charge. The only change I would make is to have five members instead of three who are Exeter residents with two alternates. I think that would accommodate the full galaxy of folks that have been involved up till now if they wanted to apply. And I'm assuming that we might get applications from other folks as well.
I hope so.
When, when this is publicized. So that would be the only change I would make is let's do five members, two alternates. I love the fact that you have an ex officio member because we do have a very active person who's not a town resident. And I love the fact that you've got the chamber represented there, also non-voting because the current representative that's attending these meetings is also not a town resident. So, but I, I think you've got it all just right, except for that one change.
So you're proposing five voting members?
I think that would accommodate everyone that's currently on the committee if they wanted to apply.
Okay. So five voting members, Exeter residents, two alternates, Exeter residents. Obviously, the following non-voting would be the select board representative, the economic development director, who'd be staff support, the Exeter chamber, and also the ex officio member.
Right.
How would we break that up with the one, two, and three years? Any suggestions? The second, two, two years, and two, three?
Two, three, two, two, and one, one.
Yeah. We'd do it similar to how we do the select board. You'd have.
Yeah, one, and then two, two, and then, yes.
One year where there's one.
Okay.
Great. That's a good, good catch on that.
Four. Oh, no, three. Okay.
So two, two, three, two, two, one, one.
Yes.
Okay. Did you get that?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
I don't know why I just went.
But I mean, do you want to approve it tonight or do you want to? I think the next meeting is roughly in the third week of September.
So if the board is willing, I would like to consider voting this evening to reinstate the committee. We can reinstate the committee with the following revised draft charge as we made the revisions this evening so that we could start setting up the interviews.
Yep.
We meet on the 15th. We'll go through the calendar later, but obviously, we're not going to interview, you know, seven people in one night, but.
If the committee has any further suggestions beyond mine, would those be entertained?
Depends what.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, I didn't say approve. That's what I meant.
No, no. As we've done with other committees, that we have either reinstated or, or implemented, it starts with the board suggesting, this is the charge, this is the makeup. And then once they get together, if they want to make changes, we've, we've done that in the past. We've either reduced, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I, and I would also suggest not like going back with the membership in stone because it is often hard to get a quorum and we've had some of those issues before.
Right.
So let's make sure that we're being flexible with who wants to and can serve.
That's a good point.
Yeah, because I think of changing the words ex officio because that means by, not by permission, but because of the status of your office. And so someone who's a volunteer, not a resident, doesn't have that kind of status. So it's.
That's a good point. What would you, do you have a suggestion?
Imperial is coming up.
Just call them a non-voting member, both the chamber and the, and what's currently listed as an ex officio.
What about a regional resident?
Yeah.
Yes, because the tree is a regional asset. Maybe we pick one from a regional community.
That's, I like that.
That was fast.
Yeah. Colaborate, Nancy.
Great.
That's great.
Thank you, Selectwoman Gilman and Ms. Roy. That's a good suggestion.
So regional representative?
Yeah.
Regional resident representative.
Instead of the ex officio, right?
Yep. Sounds better.
It does. And we do try to look regionally, right? So I have a question.
Please.
If I could. So under responsibilities advisory, and it says budget recommendations committee. I thought that was a little odd. And so my question is, let me see if I've got this right. I'm assuming this is going to have a budget.
So if you don't mind me answering.
Please.
So I think what that is in reference to is they're looking for some grant opportunities. And at some point in the near future, there are going to need to be some capital improvement investments in the area. So I don't know if there will be an annual budget, but I, again, this is a draft proposal. I put it in there so that if there were any recommendations for financials, that they would make that recommendation.
Yeah. It's just that no one usually goes to the budget recommendation. It just sounds funny to me. So.
It's specifically because of the CIP. They've, they've actually, the informal committee has drafted and, and working with Dave Sharples.
Right.
Something in the CIP. So that's, I think that's why.
Yeah, but it still wouldn't be directly to the budget recommendations committee. It would be wherever that budget would fall under. So if it falls under general government, like the planning board, the planning department, and then it would go to the budget recommendation committee as either a CIP or a budget line item. But we don't have anyone that goes right to the budget recommendation committee. It's through the process.
I think both, both the planning board and this, and the BRC are there because there's specific CIP proposals.
I think you're both right.
Yeah, I understand the planning board.
No, I think you're both right.
It's a department, basically.
It needs a department.
Needs a department. So I would, I would, and I absolutely see what you're saying, and I think that the example where you're coming from is the sustainability advisory committee fell under planning.
Mm-hmm.
And Mr. Sharples, when they wanted that first year, when they wanted the full-time position, Mr. Sharples presented that. But then during CIP night, the committee came and spoke to it. So I think maybe is that what?
Oh, yeah. We, we did that too.
Yeah.
Yes. That's normal. I mean, we.
It's a draft, so whatever, anybody.
Yeah. I, just that the budget recommendation committee, the subcommittee would vet that and talk to the, you know.
We can take.
The process. It's just something to think about, please.
In Exeter, I like it.
Again, the main push of the, this proposed committee would be to advocate for that CIP item.
Absolutely. And.
And thus, there would be a presentation to the budget recommendation committee.
Yep. Under whatever department it falls under, because it would fall, still fall under a department. And even with the planning board.
Steve Jones.
Pear Point Park just came to the planning board for the first CIP night with all the other department heads. And they fall under who? I can't think. Was that planning department?
They fall under.
Planning, I think.
Planning and Parks.
Yeah.
Right. But anyway, that's my point is that it's just.
Staff side support is economic development, so.
Correct.
Then that's, there we go. That would be a good slot for the maybe, but I'll let you guys figure out the best place. That was my only question.
Yeah, but I don't think the CIP request wouldn't come under economic development.
It's, it's kind of its own, which is why that's put in.
Yeah.
But I understand.
Well, let's play it out.
I understand your point, Nancy.
Probably the planning because that would, can cover all kinds of stuff. And economic development is kind of under planning now.
They are part of planning.
Right. So that planning, I think, would be the slot.
If it's okay with you, we can review and get.
Yes, absolutely.
I think we could, in theory, reinstate it if the.
Unless the board is opposed, I'd like to.
Oh, no, I want to reinstate it. I think that's important.
Yeah.
So I think that's okay because there's also DBW is a part of it.
Yep.
Because DBW.
Absolutely.
And so it, it doesn't lie specifically under one department, which is a little bit unusual.
Right.
You are correct. So if you don't mind giving us a little time to review that for you.
I mean, it's, you know, we have other committees. Like the tree committee comes to mind. There are subcommittee of CONCOM, but they're budget lines in public works.
You'll figure it out.
Yeah. Okay.
I have faith.
Any other comments, suggestions? Then I guess I would entertain a motion to formally reinstate the tree committee and authorize the interim town manager to contact the representatives to set up interviews and also post it for other potential folks to interview as well.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you for that. And thank you, Mr. Sharktrader, for that suggestion on the membership.
And if it turns out that that may make it difficult for them to meet, we could reduce it downward. Selectwoman Gilman made a good point.
Last discussion item this evening, again, some housekeeping with Melissa Roy assuming the role of interim town manager. We need to appoint her as the tax collector. I don't know if there are any questions.
Anything else you want to do? Any other roles you want to? Any other tasks you want to?
Exeter's unique in the fact that in 1984, the town meeting voted to have the town manager also wear the hat of the tax collector. So to make sure that we're keeping everything on the up and up, it was recommended by council that we also vote because in the initial vote to make the interim, we didn't talk about that, which is normal. So we're just do this until, until we do next steps, but happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to appoint Melissa Roy interim town manager to also serve as the interim tax collector in accordance with warrant article 43, March 1984 town meeting, and upon the recommendation of legal counsel.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We did.
Never thought I'd be.
No, thank you very much.
We took care of Parks and Rec, we took care of Police Department, and I think the only other approval is acceptance of the MS-1 summary inventory evaluation. Melissa, I don't know if you wanted to speak to that?
Sure. So this, we do annually, we are required through the state, but just to give you just a little bit of information, we, this report or these numbers get generated through the town's assessing system with the electric and gas utility assessments, and are generated by the town using the new utility formula for distribution only. Some interesting facts, the change in assessments are a result of the continued residential and commercial property construction permits, as well as physical changes between, excuse me, because of subdivision, slot line adjustments, and cyclical property reviews. The town's total taxable assessment after exemptions and TIF retained value increased around $17,802,000 for this year. It should also be noted that the TIF retained value increased roughly by approximately $2 million. So this is just authorization to sign and send to where we need to send it.
Any questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to authorize the select board to sign the New Hampshire Department of Revenue Administration 2025 MS-1?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. And Ms. Roy, I'll turn it over to you for the town manager's report, please.
I have to make the font bigger, hold on a minute.
I know that feeling. Good night, Corey.
Thank you, Corey. And I'm just going to say one more time that I really appreciate you letting the staff go early, so thank you so much. All right, so the morning, on the morning of September 4th, which is this Thursday, between 9:00 and 11:00 a.m., there will be a phone system, a planned phone system outage that will last between 30 and 60 minutes. Just want to let everybody know to expect that all phones will be offline during this time, with the exception of dispatch. So all emergency services will be fine. Residents can still call in and leave us a message, we'll get that when it goes back up, but just to let everybody know that. Household hazardous waste day this year will be on October 4th. Corey, the finance director, and I have continued to meet with our departments internally to review the FY '26 budget requests from the departments. In the last two weeks, we've had our two weekly off meetings and one leadership meeting. I continue to be part of the Ten Hampton Road building construction team that is working on that, which actually participated in a site walk today with the facilities committee. I continue to work with the police and fire substation building group as we continue to move forward with that project. We're going to be moving to, we received the 75% construction docs, so we're going to be getting ready for early bid packages for the site. I attended the, oh, excuse me, sorry about that. Corey Stevens, the finance director, and I met with the coordinator of the holiday parade. She is requesting increased funding for this year, so we'll be talking about that during the budget season. I was invited to join the GIS users group as DBW tries to work out some workflow. We've got multiple departments using multiple GIS softwares and trying to get them to all talk together and see what the best process is for that, so that was very interesting. We do not have a Park Street Bridge update, but we still have it on our radar, and we're continuing to work on that. I attended the tax exemption and credit meeting and passed along the public comment that came to you folks regarding the all-veterans credit, which they are going to take up at their next meeting, or consider taking it up. I worked with Caroline Neal, our park and recreation coordinator, and then attended the 250 Committee today to talk about their budget and looking at the pots of money or buckets of money and how to maybe separate it a little bit, explain it a little bit better, in hopes to having them have a successful 250th celebration next year. And I attended the planning board meeting last week where they finalized the CIP, there were no questions. They did mention, I'm sorry, Pam is texting me, which I think audio is out, so... Gabe, if you can hear me, the audio is out for the meeting. Let's see, we did, like I said, the walkthrough for Ten Hampton. I've been working with DPW Director Cronin and Finance Director Stevens on the groundwater easement project off of Drinkwater Road. We, I attended a train meeting, the Train Committee that we just chatted about, the unofficial Train Committee, is looking to put in a grant, and VHB has offered to do some pro bono work. And this would be a design and planning grant to design some ideas for the future improvement of the station, so I joined that meeting. And Mr. Chair, we had our biweekly agenda meeting.
Thank you very much.
Very busy two weeks.
Any questions for Ms. Roy? Terrific, thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Should we wait a minute, or...
I know, I'm...
Should I, does Gabe know?
Gabe, actually, it might be Will tonight. There we go.
Somebody's there.
It was good in here. I pulled up YouTube on my phone, it was okay.
Okay, fantastic. Great, thank you.
Thanks, Will.
And getting okay for extra TV.
Yeah, and we've got Joanna here, so thankfully, we have someone here.
Yep.
Selectboard Committee reports, Selectwoman Gilman, please.
You heard all of mine, the Facilities Advisory Committee, the 250 and, what was the other one?
Tax exemption?
Tax exemptions, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. Selectwoman Billeter, please.
Almost heard all of mine. So the only thing I wanted to add to the CIP, the second night for the planning board, was last Thursday, and there were a few members that noticed that we're trying very hard to keep things lean and with the uncertainty of things, so I did want to say that that was recognized. And planning board, Thursday, August 28th, we had a continued public hearing on 97 Portsmouth Ave. That's where the current Blue Ribbon Dry Cleaners building site is. A lot of discussion on that, and then it was continued to resume again on September 11th. And there was a wetlands conditional use permit for 18 Ashbrook Road.
I felt bad for him.
I know, but did you hear me say, see, now that you know what the process is, maybe you'll come join us? Yeah, sorry. I don't miss opportunities. And that was approved. And arts and culture was supposed to be August 26th, that was canceled. I understand it was because of no quorum. August 27th, Rec Advisory Board again was canceled, no quorum. So summertime seems to be a tough time. And just for the Housing Advisory Committee, their next meeting is September 12th. I'm going to cover that, I took the day off, because it didn't seem like I have a plan B on that yet. And I have some other things going on, so I have at least September 12th covered.
Great, thank you.
I think I can do the other, I just can't do the second Friday of every month.
That's when it is.
Well, the other commitment I have is changing their schedule, so I just don't know to what, yeah.
Okay.
Selectwoman Cowan.
Nothing to report.
Selectwoman Shartrane.
All the meetings that I attended or missed and the alternate attended have been spoken about, so no reports.
So I guess I'm up.
We have an excellent interim town manager.
I will be more careful to not do committee words.
No.
Could you start, could you start coming to a few of mine?
I was going to say.
Now she likes me best.
So I had the Swayze Park trustee meeting on the 20th, and it was sort of the same agenda with the placeholders, however. Peter Lennon, from the trustees, the chair of the trustees of the trust fund, was on a phone call as part of the meeting. And we're hoping that the trustees of the trust fund and Swayze Park trustees will attend our September 15th meeting so that we can listen to their recommendation about moving the trust that's in Ohio back to New Hampshire and manage by the trust. It makes a lot of sense, but I'm going to let them present it. Pear Point Park Committee met on August 28th, and thanks to Dev Skerritt for zooming in, we were able to get a quorum. It was difficult, though, because we couldn't hear him, so he was holding up, he was writing and drawing pictures.
Bob Dylan action.
Exactly. Subterranean hopes, good video. They just talked about more of the fundraising, donation policy, and working on a proposal for a logo. And then today, I met this morning with the E911 Committee, and we did our work for that, so... Correspondence, we had a response from the resident that wrote to me, I wrote back to her, and then she wrote back to the Board. And then, if you recall, when we accepted the town manager Rustine's resignation at our last meeting, the letter had just been received, it was not part of the packet, so we've included it for folks to have, it's a public document, so... Reviewing the Board calendar, we meet two more times in September, the 15th and the 29th. And then the interim town manager and I looked at the calendar and tried to keep everything, every other week, moving forward through the end of the year. So we are going to ask that the Board consider October 14th, which is a Tuesday.
Oops, sorry, I just lost it.
I'll hold.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Okay.
And I realize there's a Concom meeting that night, and we're going to ask them to move, hopefully, downstairs.
I have, upon this approval, I have Pam is over.
Okay.
She's going to...
Yeah, I'm there, thank you.
Okay, September 15th, September 29th, October 14th, again, which is a Tuesday, October 27th.
Okay. I, let's see, I will not be there.
On the 27th?
On the 27th.
Okay. November 10th. November 24th. December 8th. And December, December 22nd.
Okay. Sorry.
That's okay. I can go back and repeat.
November 8th, November 24th.
No, November 10th?
November 10th, November 24th.
Yep, December 8th. And December 22nd.
I know, there's emergencies at the end of the year.
And we'll make note of the 27th.
Thank you, yes, I am traveling to Greece with my mother.
Okay.
Oh, that's nice.
I have to get it.
We need to talk about that before you leave.
Yeah, I am so excited.
Okay, any other business before the Board? Yes?
Mr. Chair, you had mentioned potentially talking...
You're right, yep. We were talking during our meeting last Thursday, finance director, interim town manager, and me, about employee appreciation around the holidays, we've done that over the last couple of years, and we were proposing giving folks a half-day off on Wednesday, the day before Thanksgiving, understanding the town offices are closed on Thanksgiving and the following day, which is that Friday. And we talked about...
A half-day on New Year's?
Half-day on New Year's Eve, and...
A full day?
The full day on December...
26th, the day after Christmas.
The day after Christmas.
I'm fine with all of them.
Is that okay with everyone? Then I would like to, thank you for reminding me, I would like to entertain a motion to authorize the interim town manager to celebrate employee appreciation days by giving staff a half-day off on Wednesday, the day before Thanksgiving, a half-day New Year's Eve, and a full day December 26th.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion?
Does this mean we won't have the Yankees swapped as we have in the past?
No, we'll do that, we'll do that too.
I'm only asking because I have something to re-swap, so...
Then we will definitely get that on the calendar, and I'll make sure you hear it.
You're working on a long arc there.
There's a motion and a...
Very popular in my family.
There's a motion and a second on the table. Any other further discussions, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? It's unanimous, and we thank our employees.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Because I don't remember, what happens the summer 24th here? Are we closed?
We do a half-day?
We have a half-day.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that we weren't open until 4:00, 4:00 o'clock of the day before Christmas. Okay.
The, I just would like to say thank you so much on behalf of all the employees. I know it is incredibly appreciated, and those employees that do need to work due to their contract do have until, I think it's February, March, to use a personal time, and they work it out with their department head.
Yeah, and thank you for...
Unfortunately, we're 24/7 and a...
I know, I saw town trucks around on Memorial Day. But thank you for doing that now, so that employees have, or bringing it now, so they have time.
And let our folks at home know that...
Abs, and, and yes, that's where I was going, actually, yes, so that they can plan accordingly.
Much appreciated.
Okay. Did I forget anything else?
No.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion, please, to enter into non-public under RSA 91A32A.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please.
Selectwoman Shartrane?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Gilman?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye, it's unanimous, the Board will be moving into non-public. Thank you, and good night, everyone.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our new...